Yes, thank you, Mr Fernandez.
Chief Commissioner, Mr Condon wanted to announce his appearance.
Yes.
Chief Commissioner, Condon, on behalf of the Commissioner of Police, Sergeant Edgel and Assistant Commissioner Crandell.
Yes, thank you, Mr Condon.
Chief Commissioner, can I let the Commissioner know what's happening today in terms of witnesses? First witness today will be Sergeant Stewart, S.T.U.A.R.T., Edgel, E.D.G.E.L. He's a lead educator relating to issues such as custody and we're giving evidence about people in custody as they've related to the issues in this investigation. The second witness who was going to be called today is Assistant Commissioner Crandell. He gave evidence up to a certain point on Tuesday and then I asked that he be stood down for further examination today. As it's transpired, some issues have arisen which requires the Commission to give further thought to the additional evidence to be adduced from Assistant Commissioner Crandell and the role of that additional evidence in this investigation. For that reason, I do not propose to adduce any further evidence from Assistant Commissioner Crandell today and ask that any further evidence be produced on another date to be fixed if that suits the Commission. Chief Commissioner, you did indicate that Assistant Commissioner Crandell would be coming today and would be available for questioning and I understand, Chief Commissioner, you will consider any applications for questions of Assistant Commissioner Crandell today.
On issues so far, although there is something to be said for the fact that if he should give evidence on one occasion which would not be today-
That's right.
-on any further issues. Is there anyone who wants to make a submission that- on the issue as to whether Assistant Commissioner Crandell should not be excused from attendance today on the basis that there is expected to be a future day? I can indicate that at the end of the evidence today, I'll be adjourning, not to a specific date, but to a date to be fixed so that the Commission can give consideration to what further oral evidence may be given and there would be consultation with legal representatives about a future date which may be confined to a single day, but it will be a date selected after input from the legal representatives. So with that broader explanation, is there any reason why Assistant Commissioner Crandell can't be excused today?
Not from me, Chief Commissioner.
All right.
Nor me, Commissioner.
All right, well, thank you. It will assist, I think, if the Assistant Commissioner, whenever he returns, is in a position to give evidence to finality on that occasion. So Assistant Commissioner Crandell is not present right now-
Correct.
-and there's no difficulty with a message being given to him that he's excused today and will be in touch about a future date.
There's no difficulty with that.
All right.
Chief Commissioner, I-
Just hold on, Mr Harrowell.
Commissioner, just a minor housekeeping matter. I did speak to my friend the other day with regard to whether my client, that's MTS9, would be excused under his summons and I think Mr Fernandez asked me to remind him of that. I'm not sure whether we can deal with that.
Well, I am proposing to ask a question, not right now because we have a witness waiting, but as to whether the witnesses who have been summoned so far, who I think are all police officers, whether there is any reason why they can't be excused from attendance on the existing summons. Now, I'm not asking for responses right now, but we will come back to this before we end today. If that did occur, it allows some certainty for the moment, but it would always be on the basis, of course, that if there was an issue and the Commission considered it necessary, a further summons could issue. But I only say that now, Mr Harrowell, because you've raised the topic, but I'd like to get on with the evidence and we'll come back to hear any submissions on that topic which relates not just to your client but to others after Sergeant Edgel's given evidence.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
Before calling Sergeant Edgel, I tend to one document, Chief Commissioner.
Yes.
Yesterday, Miss Hopgood gave evidence about the Law Society of New South Wales Representation Principles for Children's Lawyers, which is now in its fourth edition. I tend to that document. The barcode is 8520643 through to 8520689.
The Representation Principles for Children's Lawyers, fourth edition, issued on behalf of the Law Society of New South Wales, will be marked Exhibit MTS98.
I call Sergeant Stewart Edgel.
Be square by almighty God that the evidence that you should give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Have a seat, if you would, Sergeant.
Thank you.
I understand that Sergeant Edgel doesn't wish to seek a declaration, Mr Condon. Is that your understanding?
That's correct, Chief.
Yes, that's right. Thank you. All right, yes, Mr Fernandez.
Can you please state your name?
Stuart James Edgel.
Are you a sergeant?
I am a sergeant of police, yes.
How long have you been a member of the New South Wales Police Force?
Roughly about 26 years.
Is your description, the lead educator in custody, in the Custody Crime Prevention Training Unit?
That's correct.
Does that come within the People and Capability Command within New South Wales Police?
Yes, it does.
Could I just ask you to clarify this at the very outset of your evidence? Now, you were here on Tuesday, Sergeant Edgel, when you heard Assistant Commissioners Cotter and Crandell give evidence, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
You are aware that one of the matters being investigated in this Commission is about custody management and children in custody?
Yes.
Just in terms of the evidence you're able to give, are you able to give evidence about the content and the training provided to New South Wales Police on issues including custody management?
Yes.
During the course of the questions you'll be asked, there will be some suggestions made about what might be included or reasons why content is not included. Can you just explain, if those suggestions are made, how does it actually end up being considered for inclusion in New South Wales Police Force training materials? Who does it have to go to? What's the decision-making process?
So on some occasions, I will get files down from senior management and those files could come from complaint matters, coronal matters or any matters that arise where recommendations are that particular pieces of information may or should be put into training. As a result of that, I will develop some sort of information package that's then brought back up the line to approve that whatever's proposed and then where that sits within the training. There's a couple of different training packages and so I'll make some advice on where that should sit, but that goes back up to sort of my commander and they make those sort of recommendations.
In the 20 years that you've been with the New South Wales Police Force, what sort of duties have you done?
So predominantly, general duties. From the first day that I left the academy, I did do a little bit of youth liaison officer just to cover a spot for a short period of time. Whilst I was a senior constable, I performed the role of the custody manager as an acting supervisor. And then when I got my role as a sergeant, I also performed some duties as acting inspector whilst I was over at Rose Bay. And that's really about it. General duties has pretty much been my career.
You've been in your current role for the last four years, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Could I just ask, when you've acted as custody manager, has that been in metropolitan areas or country areas or a mixture of both?
For me, Your Honour, it's been, sorry, city only.
City only. But your experience and the ways that you've outlined have kept you informed about what happens with custody managers in regional and country areas too?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Part of your responsibilities have included being a general duty team leader, general duties team leader, is that correct?
That's correct.
Have you also acted as a station sergeant and internal supervisor?
I have.
And have you also acted in different times as an external mobile supervisor?
I have.
In all of those roles, you do have a bit to do with custody management, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
In terms of your role, are you one of a number of educators responsible for training New South Wales Police?
For custody?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. I have one person who assists me, Senior Constable Leanne Smith, and that's the only custody educator basically in the state.
Are there educators on other aspects of policing as well?
Numerous, yes, yeah.
In terms of where you can conduct your education, is that at the academy at Galburn as well as other places?
Yes, so the New South Wales Police Academy at Galburn and new premises at Sydney Olympic Park and wherever regions require training. So we have travelled to regional locations such as Cos Harbour, Tweet Heads, Dubbo, Waga Waga, Orange, where training is necessary, where they require some training.
Who identifies that training being required when you've travelled outside of Sydney?
It is usually the education officer who will identify that. They may have a shortfall in their offices and rather than trying to send one or two to Galburn, which can be a burden on their rosters and travelling, it'd be beneficial that we travel up to them where they provide a large group of officers so that we can try and get a larger number for that command trained.
When you use the term education officer, is it the case that there's a police officer with specific responsibility for education in each command?
That's correct, yeah.
In addition to the education you provide, what is the role of that education officer in each command?
I'm not sure of their exact role, but in consultation with them, their role predominantly, they look after preparatory constables that attest from the academy. They organise training days specifically mainly basically for, it could be for sergeants, sergeants' training days, it could be team training days or whatever they need. And they organise our new learning management system, putting people on different types of training, organising their training needs when they do their training needs analysis and then they have consultation with their regional training coordinators to determine what training needs for their specific commands are recommended.
In terms of to whom you are providing training, a large part of it relates to police officers in training and then upon commencement of their duties, is that right?
That's correct.
What about ongoing training? What ongoing training is provided for police?
So I identified some time ago that we didn't have ongoing training. Once they've completed what we call the Advanced Custody Course, which is a face-to-face course, there was no further training. Since that point, I've developed a training package called the Custody Reaccreditation Package. That's currently near its completion of development and it just needs a meeting with Mr Cotter, the corporate spokesperson, to have a look over that training, which were planned in the next couple of weeks to hopefully go forth and get that released.
Training is available both in person as well as online, is that right?
That is correct.
What about resources? Are there resources such as standard operating procedures available online for New South Wales Police?
Yes, there's the New South Wales Police Handbook, there's the Person's Search Manual, there's the Standard Operating Procedures for Custody, there's LEPRA, both the Act and the Regulations. So there's various documents pertaining to custody management that police can access through our online systems.
Assuming a situation where a custody manager anywhere around the state has questions about his or her role or any issues with it, who would that person contact? Is it you? Is there any way that they are told who they can contact for assistance?
In some cases, I guess, it depends who they go to. I have received emails whereby someone said, "I've got your name from somebody because you're the lead educator for custody." I guess it's just a matter of where they go to try and find that advice and occasions it'll lead to my phone or my email address.
Are you also involved in training of superintendents and above, so police of that rank and above?
No.
Do you know what training, if any, is available to police officers of that rank and above if they've got questions or issues about anything?
I'm not aware.
I've been asking you about custody, but custody covers a number of things. Can I just define really what you mean when you refer to being the lead trainer in terms of custody and crime prevention? Arrest, is that something that you are responsible for training in? The use of arrest, the power of arrest?
We have in our training guidance on the power of arrest through legislation. There are a lot of other courses that complement all training. So there's Powers of Arrest lectures that we don't have incorporated into our training specifically, but we have the LEPRA guidelines on a PowerPoint presentation, roles of custody manager and just briefly, you know, the difference between a protected suspect and arrested person then goes into your 99B reason as to what your justification reason is to arrest that person and bring back to the police station.
Is that just that area of the power of arrest, for example? Is that something that you take responsibility for in terms of training or does that belong to another aspect of training?
Sorry, yeah, that belongs to another aspect.
To another aspect?
Yeah.
Do you know what that's called or who, not by name, but what aspect that belongs to?
Well, when I first joined my section, there were lead educators for police powers. We don't have them sit with us anymore, so I can't tell you where they sit now, I don't know.
The use of force, is that something within your responsibility or would that be a lead educator on police powers?
That would be a lead educator on that particular subject.
Who would be responsible in terms of the lead educator on issues relating to body-worn cameras? Is that another lead educator's responsibility?
Yes.
What about interviewing suspects? Is that something that comes within your area of training?
We don't have that in our training. Again, there's other training that complements that. So the organisation has, that I know of, several courses about interviewing and it's something that we have only got a very limited amount of time to get through a lot of training because for us, it's not just legislation and policy. It's all about the assessment, the safe process of a person, which is really important. So someone else will deliver that training.
I will come in detail later to what is available by way of interviewing vulnerable persons in custody. Is that something that you have responsibility for in terms of training or is that under someone else's responsibility?
We partly look at that. We look at that in our LEPRA part and our policy regarding, well, who is a vulnerable person? How to identify a vulnerable person and what resources are available to police to provide, to get or provide support for that person. Specifically interviewing, we don't really cover that.
Do you know if that's covered anywhere else in terms of education within New South Wales Police?
No, I don't.
I'm going to take you now to the specific training that's provided to custody managers.
Yes.
If a person wants to become a custody manager, what are the requirements?
So they will be required to organise with their education officer, the required training to get that qualification. They'll need to complete, we have the online course called the Custody Fundamentals. They're required to complete that before they are placed onto a waiting list, basically, for our course. Their education officer or their regional training officer will place that person on the course. In relation to how they get identified, they could be identified because they've just received a promotion and it's, in my understanding, it's part of that promotions process to say that they're willing to undertake the Advanced Custody Course once they get promoted. Commands will usually send police officers that may be acting in the role. So there might be a senior constable who are acting as a supervisor and need to perform the role of a custody manager and send them along to us. In regional areas, you may have one-stripe constables, so very junior constables in remote locations that are performing that function. So perhaps the commands might send those people along as well in order to get some sort of training in custody.
These are all preparatory courses that you've described in terms of the custody awareness package, that's an online course, is that right?
That's correct.
And then there's the Custody Fundamentals that you've also described, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And then is there an Advanced Custody Course which a police officer who wishes to become a custody manager must complete?
Yes.
Just in terms of those first two courses, custody awareness and custody fundamentals, is there any assessment at each stage after a police officer does that training online of that person's level of understanding?
In the custody awareness package, it's only a very short package. It's about 30 or 40 minutes. The only assessment is an online component, which our online management system marks. And in the fundamentals, very similar, there's online questions. There's a case study at the end of both of those where police will have to answer questions as opposed to, for what the information of the case study is. But the custody fundamentals, one component is an infield assessment form, so they'll have to go out and complete a custody shift or some custody hours with a custody manager who will have a form and a guidance of what they need to look for and assess the person. And if the custody manager believes that the person has taken on board the training and believes that they're adequate and can perform the role of basically an assist, then they'll sign them off on that form, hand the form back. The form is then handed back to the officer. That officer uploads that form onto the learning management system. That form then sits in a system where I have access to and all we really do is process it. So we'll look at the comments made by the custody manager and basically process that.
I'm going to ask you about the Advanced Custody Course. Is that a three-day face-to-face course?
That is correct.
And that course is essential for someone who wishes to become a custody manager. They must complete that course, is that correct?
That is correct, in the current environment.
How long has that course been present for?
Sorry?
Do you know how long that course has been present for?
So the three-day course has been present since November 2020. Prior to that, we had a five-day course, face-to-face course. That concluded in August 2020. All custody courses have, all our courses have expiry dates and they all expired in 2020. At that particular point, our organisation were looking at a new learning management system and custody just happened to be one of the first courses to be redesigned and it was redesigned a few months later and turned into a three-day package.
What about the content? What is actually taught during the Advanced Custody Course?
So we've got, day one is session, session one is LEPRA. So that's basically what we do is we cut and paste straight out of legislation and our policy and go through that process. So incorporated into LEPRA is detention warrants for a person, vulnerable persons, intoxicated persons, obviously the protected persons, so that general LEPRA information. Session two is called PIC management, which is Person in Custody Management. In that package, we talk about WHNS requirements for the environment they work in. We talk about the assessment process of a person and their fitness to be in custody. We talk about, there's a little bit in there about some strip searching and searching techniques. And we've got our police micro-learn, they're short videos on learning. There's some information there about positional asphyxia that was made on a micro-learn about a death in custody. And we have, we talk about medications in custody, medical issues, some coronial recommendations from a matter that I was involved in back in 2018. And the last component of that first day is a case study, which is a death in custody that occurred in Maitland. That's basically day one.
Just before you go on to day two, you described one part of the training as being about an assessment or the fitness of that person being in custody. What does that involve?
It involves us talking about the questionnaire on the police custody management system. So the custody management system has various questions to ask a person in custody. It could be either taking tablets, drugs, insulin, medication. Have they ever been treated with asthma, heart disease, diabetes, epilepsy? Questions like, are they Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander? Have they ever tried to kill themselves? Mental health issues, basically a whole range of issues. So that the custody manager has some information to be able to properly manage a person in custody according to their medical needs or their vulnerabilities and what requirements for certain, if they identify as an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander, you know, what do we have to do for that particular person, support people and, you know, contacting ALS, those sorts of things.
Contacting ALS, does that mean contacting ALS in terms of letting them know that someone's in custody and arranging for a support person to be with the person in custody?
That's correct, yeah.
Is any part of the training in terms of the Advanced Custody Course about giving people in custody, particularly children, the opportunity to speak to a solicitor? Is there any specific training about that?
Not specific training. All the guidelines around the responsibilities under LEPRA regarding that the person should be afforded the opportunity to contact a legal representative. As I said, there's so much to go into that most of what we talk about is the legislative requirements and we don't go too much into that. That's what the legislation is required for a police officer to do.
What happens on day two? What's the content covered on day two of the Advanced Custody Course?
So day two, we go through the case study from the previous day. Participants are required to read the document for the case study, are required to answer some questions and we'll go through that in a class situation. There's various questions about, you know, was the need for detention appropriate? And we get a class discussion about that. There's things like, what could have been done better? What were the positive things? Those sorts of questions. So day two is going through that in the morning. What were the positive things? Those, those sorts of questions. So day two is going through that uh in the morning. Day two.
Before you go on, that need for detention being appropriate, uh, what, what is discussed about that particular aspect? Are custody managers asked to consider themselves quite directly, is it necessary for this person to be in custody?
Um, partic- yeah, particularly and, and, and I guess, um, if there's some sort of dispute um with the custody manager and the officer in charge, our, our policy says that the custody manager cannot refuse a, a custody. Um, however, uh, if there's some sort of dispute, um, a- as we heard with previous evidence on Tuesday, um, that then goes up the line. Um, so the custody manager may uh then take that up to the duty officer or the inspector um and have a conversation about, you know, whether that person should be or shouldn't be detained.
Is, is that the, what custody managers in training are told? That if there's some disagreement with investigating officers or arresting officers or escorting officers, that it needs to go to the duty officer, someone usually of the rank of inspector?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. You, you're describing day two um in terms of the training. What else is discussed on?
So on day two, we have our bail lecture, so um some excerpts from the bail act. Uh, we then go into a bail COPS presentation on a PowerPoint. Um, that shows participants how to um complete a bail determination um through our COPS management system. Um, and once they've completed that, the third part of that is sitting down at a computer and actually doing a bail determination on the computer. Um, I said the good thing about that is sometimes we have experienced custody managers and they'll assist us with, with other participants on completing that, completing that role. Um, we also have um a session called infection control. So that's talking about um people that may come in that have infections um and how to, how to manage them, what sort of resources we have in the police station to, to manage that. Um, obviously when COVID was around, we had a lot, a lot, our, our, our processes were quite different. Um, and notwithstanding that, um, whatever um equipment that police need to complete their duty safely. We have another component called Craig's Services. Uh, that, that component is, is basically just, um, it used to be facilitated by um superintendents from Craig's Services. However, of recent times, we have just facilitated that because of time constraints with um their time. And so what's discussed in that is just very minimal um guidelines. Um, there were some issues with some property matters which are brought up, um, where some inappropriate property was booked up. Um, so we discussed that sort of thing, um, tran- transferring them, communication they should have with them um to, to get someone um who maybe bail refused to be transported. Um, and then the last part of that day is another case study, um, of another uh death in custody, police death in custody. Uh, and again, similar to first case study, they read a document. Uh, and then the following day, uh, we'll go through that, um, completing the same process as the, as the first case study.
What, uh, to what extent does the advanced course cover the differing situations that a regional area, even a remote area, might have as opposed to a Sydney, Newcastle or Wollongong area, for example?
Yep. Facilitating the custody, advanced custody course is very difficult. Uh, as you could um imagine, we've got police from city, police from regional locations, we've got very junior police, um, we've got senior police. So when we cover our content, we're basically covering our, our legislation, our legislative requirements. Um, individual um situations, it's really hard to facilitate because there's so many different individual si- situations in, in regional areas to city areas. And same with um policing requirements and staffing, staffing issues. So I guess what we say in the course is that we understand that each individual sitting there has their own individual um perspective on the way that their uh custody manager operates. Um, and unfortunately, we can't deliver our training to each individual person. So um we, we take that on board. Uh, from time to time, we may get a, a question. Uh, if I can't answer it, uh, we, we put it in our bank and I will um get that answered at some point and send that answer through to everybody.
Is, is there a way within the organization that a custody manager in one particular area can raise issues or questions or concerns with training, leaving to one side their particular commander in that area? So something that might be more of an issue relevant to other custody managers as well. Is there a mechanism for that to take place?
Uh, sorry, I didn't quite understand your question.
So generally, the custody manager is, is always going to be accountable to the commander of the local area. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And, and the standard operating procedures make clear it's the commander of the o- of the local area uh who has ultimate responsibility for people in custody. Is that right?
That is right.
The custody manager uh will generally go to the commander for any issues that might arise, you would expect.
Yes.
What about particular questions or particular issues that the custody manager uh might not get um the same level of assistance from the commander from? Can they turn to you as a lead educator or someone else to ask very specific questions about custody management?
Yes, they can.
How's that communicated? Who, who can they contact?
Usually I just get sent an email and, um, and, and I'll, I'll have a look at the email um and see where they've taken that information first and I'll decide um how I then proceed with that. Uh, if the custody manager has had some discussions with their commander, um, as you are aware, we're a rank structure. And um, you know, going outside of perhaps what a commander may make a decision and a disagreement with them. And then it comes to me, I, I will have a look at that and perhaps take it to my commander and see where we need to go with that through the proper channels.
New South Wales Police is a statewide organization. Is there a way that recurring issues that each uh custody manager might have can be raised with the organization? So it goes beyond just the police district or the area command?
They can raise that, I guess, several ways. Um, during our course, uh, first and foremost, myself. If they know to contact me, they can contact me. Um, but in, in a lot of specific cases, in all commands, each command should have some sort of spokesperson for custody. And during the course, I tell them that um that's the person they should be going to for advice and guidance. Um, and I explain who it may be. So it could be a duty officer who's in charge of systems and processes. It could be one that's in charge of customer service or somebody in the command that they, because they know their command. Um, and if they don't know who that person is, um, they can go and speak to the duty officer, find out who that person is and raise those concerns with that particular person.
I'm going to ask you about specific training on what should be included in custody management records. Do you understand that? Uh, I'm going to ask you what the specific training is provided during the course on what should be included. Now, section one hundred and thirty-one of LEPRA, together with clause twenty-one of the regulations, relate to what should be included in a custody management record and that must form a part of your materials. Is that, is that correct?
It is correct, yes.
That, that sets out a number of very mechanical things, such as the name of the arresting officer, details of property, dates, times of transfer, uh, and other details. What training is provided about additional details that should be included in custody management records?
The only thing that we say to them verbally is that their custody management record is their content, contemporaneous notes. And um that they should be recording as, basically as much as possible. We don't go into specifics because there's so much information. What we say to them is that their record should be concise and it should contain all the information about the presentation of that person uh in a custody, in, in custody.
The custody management record is an electronic document. It's dealt with electronically for the most part. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there also scope, though, for physical documents to be placed onto the custody management records?
Yes, there is.
So for example, uh, a, a document signed by a support person, for example, which will have a signature that can be placed electronically onto the custody management records. Is that right?
That is right.
Similarly, reports or notes that a person might have with them, they can also be placed on, on the custody management record.
Yes, that is correct. I, sorry.
You've got to say something else, though.
Um, when we get to the process of um uploading documents, um, uh, my recommendation and my best practice is that I say to them that, and I, I'm from my personal experience, that I upload every document that the police have. Um, so that at a later stage, if, if the officer in charge needs some sort of document, whether that be the part nine, the support person's document, um, it could be an AVO, it could be a field can or anything like that, then it's readily accessible on the system. Um, and, and that's something that we encourage um to make sure that they, they upload as, as many of the documents that the officer in charge has. Um, so it's there. It's, it's readily available. Um, a lot of our documents get archived or they get put in files or the officer's files. And sometimes the files are quite hard to locate, um, especially if there's court matters and you get phone, you may get a phone call um as a custody manager from a, a court requesting the part nine, um, because it's gone missing or whatnot. So that's why we, we present and say that it's really important that you upload, you know, the, the best practices to upload all the documents that the officer has.
Sergeant Edgell, I'm going to have a document placed up on the screen. It's an exhibit in this trial. Uh, sorry, in this investigation. It's a memorandum from two thousand and four between New South Wales Police and Legal Aid. Uh, it's MTS sixty-five. The barcode is eight, five, four, three, five, six, nine. I'd ask for it to be put up on the screen. You've seen this referred to already on Tuesday, but I'll, I'll have it put up on the screen now. And if we could go to about a third of the way down the page to uh the youth hotline protocol. Can you see a, a numbered paragraph there, number ten?
Yes.
I'll just read it out.
Yep.
If the young person exercises their right to silence, the investigating officer should record this in COPS event as quote, in, interview declined, end quote. The custody manager should also record in the general comments of the custody management record that the young person declined an interview. Can you see that?
I can.
Is uh that contained within the content of uh the uh advanced custody course?
No.
Uh, is that contained within the content of the custody fundamentals online course?
No.
Um, is that contained within the content of the custody awareness package?
No.
Um, before the course of you giving, uh, of you hearing the evidence on Tuesday, were you yourself, Sergeant, aware of that requirement?
The, was I aware of the, of the?
Of, of the memorandum of understanding?
I was not aware of it.
Um, you heard uh questions asked uh by myself on uh Tuesday. You also heard the chief commissioner in a discussion with Assistant Commissioner Cotter talking about the, the need for something to be done really very quickly to remedy that situation i- in the form of a, a statewide announcement, for example. Um, so that all police are made aware of that memorandum, memorandum of understanding. Uh, can I just ask by asking you, do you know why that's not included as part of the material available to police?
Um, the, I can't answer that direct question, but I can say that um, the advanced custody course was brought over from the previous five-day course and its content. Um, in addition, there was some, there was some material that was added into that. That was the, the, one of the case studies, new few, a few other things out of complaints and recommendations. Um, as I said, I wasn't aware of this memorandum of, of understanding. Um, Tuesday was the first time I saw it. I have made several notes about this. Um, clearly, um, out of this, uh, Mr. Cotter will make a stance on this and organizationally, there'll be a direction. Um, from time to time, I have meetings with Mr. Cotter's staff, being the corporate sponsor for custody. And um I'll bring, bring up certain things from time to time. Um, if this is the corporate direction, uh, and whatever way they go, um, I guess that, that their conversations that I'll have with myself in relation to the, the possibility or the putting of thi- this information into any training. And as I said, I, I took notes. So um, yeah, I, I believe that it should be put into our training.
What training is currently provided in, in any of the courses available, but perhaps particularly in the advanced custody course, about recording a suspect's wishes in terms of an interview? Is there any training provided about that?
No.
I'm going to ask for uh another exhibit to be placed up on the screen. This is exhibit MTS ninety. Uh, I'll give the barcode, it's eight, six, two, zero, two, six, one. Could we please go to the, zoom in on the right-hand side to the top paragraph? This, uh, you've also seen this uh document shown to Assistant Commissioner Cotter on uh Tuesday. I'll just read the relevant part. This is from a circular in two thousand and five. This is to police and it says relevantly, you do not have the power to compel or intimate to the suspect that they must participate in an electronic uh recorded interview for the purpose of recording their refusal. Record the refusal in your notebook and if appropriate, on the fax sheet. Is this circular, that specific part that I've just read out to you, is that contained as part of the advanced custody course? Is that part of the content?
No.
Is it available elsewhere in terms of online resources for New South Wales Police, to your knowledge?
A lot of our documents are usually archived somewhere. Sometimes I've got to dig up uh bits of information. I have not seen this circular whilst I was around in two thousand and five. I don't remember reading it or receiving it. Um, as I said, a lot of documents I have to dig, dig up for, so, but I'm not aware of, I'd have to, wherever this sits, on our system, if it does.
Could I ask you, were you aware of this circular before it was placed up on the screen to Assistant Commissioner Cotter on Tuesday?
No.
Uh, thank you. That can be taken off the screen. You will have heard me speak to Assistant Commissioner Cotter on Tuesday or ask him questions about a number of cases that have taken place at all levels of courts in New South Wales, the Children's Court, the District Court, the Supreme Court, the Court of Criminal Appeal, where evidence taken from suspects and particularly children has been excluded. Particularly in the circumstance where the child has been given legal advice and refused to take part in an interview but was subsequently interviewed. Do you recall those questions being asked on Tuesday?
Yes.
Does that form that situation? You, you've talked about a number of case studies. Is that issue addressed in any way in the advanced custody course?
No.
You've described some case studies. Are any of those case studies, uh, is there any uh reflection or relation to cases that have been considered particularly by the Supreme Court and the Court of Criminal Appeal about admissions and whether they've been excluded or not excluded?
No.
The, the case studies you've mentioned of, do they largely come out of inquests, deaths in custody situations? Are they the, um, the origin of the case studies that you've referred to that are in the materials already?
Yes.
Yep. And that's understandable, given the function. Yes, yes, Mr. Fernandez. Is there any training provided as part of the advanced custody course to explain what it is that? to explain what it is that solicitors from the Aboriginal Legal Service and Legal Aid New South Wales, what it is that they do as part of their role on their respective hotlines?
No.
Yesterday, we had a witness, her name is Miss Hopgood. She's from the, she's the acting principal legal officer of the Aboriginal Legal Service and she described certain attitudes held by police about solicitors. And I'm just going to generalise by saying the concerns she expressed was that police thought it was always one type of advice, don't give evidence. And they, police may see it as some impediment on, on what was they were doing as part of their investigation. Is, is that discussed at all in terms of training in the advanced custody course?
No.
Why, sorry, so I think you just answered it, but, but in terms of explaining why there is the ability for vulnerable persons, suspects and particularly children to have legal advice, is that discussed at all?
The only thing we discuss in relation to that is directly taken from the, the Lepra side of it, that a vulnerable person should be given the opportunity to contact the Justice Advisory Service if the custody manager identifies through questioning. When I say questioning, I mean custody assessment questioning, not investigation questioning, that the person may be vulnerable. Or, or whatever, whatever personal circumstances they're in, whether they're a, a young person, whether an Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander, perhaps they have cognitive impairment. And basically what the legislation says that the obligations of police are required and that is, you had to contact either the Justice Advisory Service or ALS. So it's very, what we do facilitate is, is very minimal compared to going right, right into it.
Is there any part of the content of the advanced custody course that talks about communication between the custody manager and investigating police? Police and ongoing communication?
Not particularly.
Does this come within your, your area of training or the, or the custody management course about the issue of continuation of custody or discontinuance of, of arrest or a person being in custody? Does that form any part of your responsibility for training?
Only very, very briefly. And that, that is that if there's that discussion between the custody manager and they believe that the arrest should be discontinued and then it's a matter that they would discuss with the officer in charge. And if there was a disagreement, then they would place that up to the inspector and that's, that's pretty much it.
There are mechanisms within Lepra for discontinuation of arrests, for example. Does that form part of the material for, that's used in the advanced custody course?
No.
Is there discussion, is, is any part of the content of the advanced custody course about interviewing suspects and particularly interviewing children in custody?
Not, not particularly. Only the requirements of support persons and, and any legislative requirements that police have to abide by.
Now, I appreciate the person responsible for interviewing is not going to be the investigating officer.
Yes.
He's not going to be the custody manager unless in very exceptional circumstances. They're going to be separate people. I took you to the memorandum from two thousand and four about obligations on both investigating police as well as on custody managers. To separately note that interviews have been declined. Is there anything at all covered about that aspect?
No.
Is, in terms of, are you aware about the, the continuing practice of police putting children in front of a camera for the purpose of quote, in fairness, putting the allegations to them, end quote? Is that something you're aware of?
Ah, no.
Is that something that forms any part of your responsibility for training?
No, not, well, not at this stage. We don't have any, any of that in our training. As I said, corporately, corporately, they may say that that information may need to exist somewhere. If that then falls back to my portfolio, then I will work with our organisation to address that.
Questioning suspects, is that any, any part of training in the advanced custody course beyond what you've already described?
No.
What training is provided to officers in the advanced custody course about changes in circumstances of a person in custody? Because circumstances can change for all sorts of reasons. Is that discussed at all? Is that a part of the content?
I guess not particularly, but in, in general, a custody manager, we, we facilitate that a custody manager continually assesses a person and makes decisions on what's happening at the time.
One of the specific roles of the custody manager is to find a support person, particularly for Aboriginal people and, and for children. That would be correct, isn't it?
They, the officer in charge should be the person that, that does that. The custody manager should ensure that it's done and make, and make a record of that, that it's completed. In that way, once the custody manager makes the record, that, that a requirement can be satisfied.
If an officer is not doing that, or let's just assume that there is no investigating officer at the time. So someone arrives having been transported into custody, but at that stage, there is no investigating officer. That would be the responsibility of the custody manager, wouldn't it? To find a, a support person?
That may, that task might be transferred to the escorting police that, that come to the police station. It would be a question that the custody manager may ask the escorting police, what, perhaps what information was discussed at the scene? Was there any phone calls made at the scene? And in relation to finding a support person? And anything that occurred at the scene in relation to that to be placed on the record. So it could be, it could be that the custody manager may take up that task or maybe that they may delegate that task out to the escorting police if that, if the officer in charge is still at the location.
Let's assume the custody manager is going to take on that task of finding a support person. Is there any training provided about who the appropriate support person should be in terms of what their relationship might be to the person in custody or specifically a child? Is there any training about that?
Yes, there is.
What's that training?
So again, taken directly from Lepra about support persons and at what age, a, a young person can choose their own support person and under the age of fourteen, that the police have to contact their parent or guardian or someone who has custody of that child. And again, it's very minimal, minimal disgust, but it's just drawn from literally the legislation.
I did foreshadow that I was going to ask you some specific questions about what's available as part of the advanced custody course relating to vulnerable persons in custody. Is there training to police beyond just managing the, the physical health of a, a person in custody in terms of managing their interviewing in custody?
Not the interviewing, but certainly identifying, as I said earlier, identifying, showing them the particular Jazz poster that must be up in each police station. And if it's not up, they, they had to contact myself to, to get that poster put up.
What poster did you say? What was the word before poster? A particular?
Jazz.
Jazz, sorry, Justice Advisory Service, sorry.
Justice Advisory Service.
Yeah, yeah. So we encourage that police, if, if they feel that the person needs support, they've identified the person has a cognitive impairment and that, that they need some advice and guidance. They may not even be sure, they're talking to the person and decide that we need to contact someone. So we strongly advise that they contact that service. That service was given some funding some time ago to become twenty-four seven. It never used to be for the police. Now it is, so we encourage them. And in fact, someone from the Intellectual Disability Service, oh, sorry, is the overarching banner of Jazz, used to deliver a session on our old course and we had a quite a good rapport with them. And, a- and as a result of that, we strongly recommend to police that if I start identifying these, these things, that they should be contacting that service because they provide a very good service to police, so.
It, it is a fact that Aboriginal people are overrepresented as a proportion of the population in custody. Is there any specific training provided as part of the advanced custody course about dealing with Aboriginal people in custody?
We have our, our usual Lepra requirements. We have a session called Aboriginal Communities, although that session is, is more about some of the cultural things that police might need to be aware of. They might, we, we talk about some of their, their health. Obviously that if someone comes into custody, they identify as an Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander, that there's certain obviously requirements that the police will need to, to do. At the end of that session, there's a video on a death in custody in Western Australia of an Aboriginal female in the lockup there, where she was brought in as an intoxicated person. There were no offences detected with her. And we discussed that, that matter and it's quite visual. You see, you see her fall heavily. And, and at that, and the end of that, we discuss the responsibilities of what police officer. And we can transfer that not just to an Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander, but to people in general. So that session that we had, that we have for Aboriginal communities, if I can go back to the course, the course was built out of the recommendations of the Royal Commission into Aboriginal deaths in custody. And so we've kept that component of Aboriginal communities in the course because it's important that police look at how they manage a person in custody who's Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander. So the, the, that particular session only goes for an hour, which includes the, the video. So there's, it, it, it's only a small component of, as you could expect, the whole three days.
Is there any training about communication, particularly with Aboriginal people or perhaps even people with a cognitive impairment? Is there any training about specific, about communication with people who might find it difficult?
I guess if we talk about Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander, we have embedded in the training a video from a doctor who was summoned by the police to have a look at Aboriginal language and the courts. And she, she went to a town in Baraville and she observed some language. So she brings up some four, four important points in relation to that about communicating with Aboriginal people and just some cultural awareness that police should have when they are speaking to people who, who are Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander. In relation to persons with cognitive impairment, we don't have specific training in relation to how to interview them. But certainly that assessment process while speaking to them, you know, forming that opinion that the person may have a cognitive impairment and going further and asking the direct question, do you have a cognitive impair, impairment? I guess the issue with that is some people get embarrassed about that and won't, won't tell them. And whilst police are psychologists, it's still important they try and canvass to make sure that the, that person has, we, we are, we're giving them the appropriate services that, that they need.
One of the roles of the custody manager is to provide a suspect, a person in custody with information about their legal rights. And one of the responsibilities of the custody manager is to assist that person to exercise those rights. Is there any training about ensuring that the information provided is actually understood by the person?
Absolutely. That's one of my passions is the understand, standard, the understanding of the part nine, reading the part nine. One example I give is if I gave everyone the form now and went down the street and asked them to read it to any member of the public on the street, would they understand it? Probably not. So we all know it's a very complicated document. My advice is that it's to be read in its entirety, that once they read each paragraph, that they then ask the person what their understanding of that is. And if they don't understand it, what else is going on there? Is it just that they, they don't understand it? And if that's the case, police are to re-articulate that in a, in a more simpler version. And if that's the case, then that should be noted on the record that that's, that process is being completed. Anyone that comes in that's a regular presenter and usually they'll say, oh, you read it to me last week or I get, you know, I'm, I'm always in custody. I know my rights, just give it to me and I'll sign it. What we're facilitating is that's not appropriate. Every single presentation, you must read it in its entirety and the person must understand it.
What's the training about how a custody manager ensures that the person understands it?
For them to, basically to, to say to the custody manager that for each paragraph, so they, they don't forget the paragraphs after each paragraph, for that person to tell you back what they understand that paragraph meant. And if they?
In that person's own words?
Yes, 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 yes. And if the custody manager receives a response that the person doesn't understand it, again, we might put it in a simpler wording. Or we might be thinking about the other, other, what else is going on? Perhaps they're from non-English speaking background. Perhaps they're, yeah, at the educational level, isn't at the point where they understand it? They, they could be a vulnerable person with a cognitive impairment, so impairment. So all those things are, are coming in place. And as I said, when I deliver that session, I'm passionate about that. The person must understand it's a very complicated document and most people in general don't really understand it.
That's, that's the Form thirty-one document, is it?
The part nine?
The summary of part nine.
It's?
Information for detained persons.
Yes, yeah. So for us, it's a P six.
It's seventeen paragraphs and acknowledgement. It's, how, how long ago was this drafted? Perhaps I should?
It's been in as long as I can, I can remember. I think my understanding is that perhaps there's a working party that might even be looking at that. I, I'm not sure, I, I've just heard that in a, in a, in a workshop that I, is involved with it, perhaps someone's looking at that.
Courts certainly in recent times have attempted to introduce plainer English versions of things like what courts have to say to people and explaining the decision whether to plead guilty or not guilty in the local court before they're committed to the superior court. And quite a bit of effort's gone into making them as short and as plain English as possible. But one of the problems with this, there are many components to it and so it has to cover quite a lot of territory.
Yes.
Whether shortening it assists or doesn't is a matter of judgment, I suppose. But you, you think it may be that there is some part of the authorities in this state who are giving some thought to whether this form can be simplified in some way?
Yes, I, I sit on a working party for support persons and there's numerous people that sit on that from justice, solicitors, police and from the various other organisations, looking at that it's way too complicated. looking at that it's way too complicated. Out of that support person workshop and programme, I don't know where that will go. But my personal opinion is I hope it is simplified, because again, it's for any person to try and understand that document, it's very difficult.
Is this used for young people as well as adults?
Yes.
So, a fourteen-year-old may have this document read to them?
Yes.
Yes.
What sort of-
Or a ten-year-old for that matter?
Yes.
A ten-and-a-half-year-old?
Yes.
What assessment is there of police officers who take part in the advanced custody course? Are there assignments, written work, what's the assessment?
So, we have what's called an assignment, which is a ten-question assignment at the start of the course. So, they'll complete that as we move through LEPRA, there'll be certain questions, and they'll need to provide the answers from the information off the PowerPoint. That's not formally assessed with a mark. We'll have a look at that at the end of it and make sure that they're on the right track. If they're not, we'll get in contact with them to redo it. There's the case studies. Again, they're not formally assessed with a percentage mark, but we'll look at those, we discuss it in class, as I said. We look at their responses, and if there's anything glaringly that we might find an issue, we'll get in contact with them to have a discussion with them. There's another process about the custody management system. There's a practical exercise that they have to move through and complete. So, on the computer, they complete in the training custody programme, a fictitious person, and they have to move through a document. Again, that's not given a percentage or anything. We'll assess that as we move through the classroom, and that they're moving through those actions. But at the end of it, we have a nineteen-question exam. That is marked, and the pass mark for that is seventy percent.
Is that in the form of an essay, or is it short questions, is it done online, on paper?
Yeah, it's done, it's completed on our learning management system, on our computer. So, an officer will sit at the computer. If our computers crash, we have a paper version of it. And it's mostly marked by our learning management system, and we'll go through it and mark a few of the answers. But it's a whole range of different, I guess, examination techniques, so drag and drop, true and false, short answer, all those sorts of-
And how much time is allocated to finish that online exam, to finish that exam?
So, about half an hour.
After, are there any people who, after completing the advanced custody course, are deemed not suitable to go on to be custody managers?
For us, the assessment process is what we look at their criteria. If they've passed all the criteria, then they'll sit on our SAP system as having completed successfully the advanced custody course. That then, again, you've got your instrument of appointment in relation to custody managers. That course will allow the person to sit on the instrument of appointment for custody managers. However, at the same time, it's still up to the commander whether he or she feels that the person's training is adequate, and they'll make that decision whether that person can sit on that instrument of appointment. Because we've got previous training as well, which, when you look at that training, can still allow a person to sit on the instrument of appointment. In relation to that, again, a commander will look at that, that officer's training on how long ago they did it, what training package they completed. And we've had people who have done previous training, many people, complete the new course to update their skills. And again, we used to have a one-day course, and so there's a lot more content in the three-day course. And a commander may send their people along to get that refresher, I guess, or to build on their current training.
Are there, after completing the advanced custody course, are there other courses available for custody managers?
Not specifically from my department. Obviously, there's a whole range of courses that complement the whole process. But as I said, we have, we are developing the re-accreditation course.
Yes, could you explain that, what the re-accreditation course is?
So, the re-accreditation course will occur every three years. A custody manager who sits on the instrument of appointment, again, we're only making advice that the course is available. We're putting it back on the commands to say that they should ensure that it's completed. So, every three years, whoever sits on the instrument of appointment must complete it. Commander could ask anyone to complete that course. If they've completed some other various custody courses, we don't want, it's not a course that someone can just pick up from the bottom if they've done no other custody courses, because it complements it as it goes along. The course, the course will be, the course will be changed. It's not a course like the other courses we've got, which it's there, it sits there. People are due to sit there for whatever amount of time that then maybe a second version comes along. This course will change every three years. What will change about it is the content in relation to what's occurred in the previous three years. Anything out of complaint matters, LECC matters, coronial matters, or anything that's arisen where we feel that current custody managers need to gather or get that information, if that makes sense. Sorry, that will be only an online course, it won't be a face-to-face course. And that course will probably take about thirty to forty minutes to complete.
Up until now, has there been that re-accreditation necessity?
There hasn't been a course. However, I did identify earlier that I believe that there should be some sort of re-accreditation or further information. My personal opinion is that, once you've completed the advanced custody course, that should not be the end of your training.
What was it that helped you identify that there needed to be re-accreditation or further information provided?
I guess because then, legislation, policy, there's a lot of changes. And certainly, over periods of time, custody managers, they're getting it, some of them are getting it wrong. And my passion is custody, that's why I'm the lead educator for custody, and I want to instill that. It's really important they keep up their training, and that any issues that have arisen are brought to the surface. And I guess for a custody manager to be retrained or to be trained with another process, starts the wheel again, or starts them thinking about custody again. Because what I've found in the past, it's their knowledge has dropped off a bit. And I guess with the re-accreditation, we're going to try and ensure that that is continued throughout their placing.
You may or may not know the answer to this, but is there any information about how long officers remain as custody managers? It might depend on the area and what have you, but is it a distinct role or is it a role that's complementary with other functions that a police officer might have?
Yes, certainly, it complements other roles. So, that particular person that performs the role, in most cases, would be a substantive sergeant, or if not, an acting sergeant. Again, in regional areas, it's different, it'd be junior police. But that role, once they, as I said, once they get the qualification and they are placed onto the instrument of appointment for their command, they will stay there until the, like an assessment by their commander. So, every so often, and I don't know what the timeframe is, but commands must look at their instrument of appointment. Obviously, staff leave, they come into the command, and it needs to be updated regularly. And so, a commander should be looking at that, and perhaps even looking at their training history and making decisions on whether a person should still be placed on it or whether they need retraining and be sent to our advanced custody course.
Chief Commissioner, I wonder if that might be a suitable time for morning tea?
Just before we do break, could I just ask you, this, it could be said that the role of custody manager is a very important one in any functioning police station. Is that a fair comment?
That is a very fair comment, Your Honour.
Because you've got the investigating police who may bring the person in, who have a particular interest. But under LEPRA and the LEPRA regulation, the custody manager has roles which include looking after the interests of the person in custody.
That's correct.
Is service as a custody manager something which the police force encourages persons to undertake on the basis that it's not only important, but something which may assist them in further promotional opportunities? For example, sergeants being better equipped for promotion to inspector?
I'm not aware of the organisational stance on that. I'm not aware that if a sergeant is going for an inspector's role, whether there's a custody component. Certainly, to become a sergeant, there's definitely a custody component to that.
Perhaps I could ask you this one, and this may be difficult to answer too, but in your experience, is it a popular position?
No.
Are there streams of applicants to undertake the course or not?
Well, there is in terms of promotion, because police want to get promoted, and they need to undertake the course. But in my years of experience, it's not a popular role, because it's a very hard role to complete. And again, you know, you're dealing with a lot of people that come into custody that have a lot of vulnerabilities. And it doesn't have to be a person under, the act as a vulnerable person, they have vulnerabilities with medical issues, and police have to assess that. And, you know, if you've got ten or twelve people in custody and it's getting very busy in there and very loud, there's a lot of processes that the custody manager has to complete. There's other admin processes that we don't even teach, that they might have to send off aeros tapes and calibrate, you know, breath analysis machines and all those sorts of things. So, there's a lot, there's a lot of tasks that a custody manager must complete on any one shift.
One other thing we've seen in this investigation, that without speaking of the particular location of the police station, but there was a CCTV operating so that what was happening around the charge desk, where the custody manager was, was visible and recorded by, visually at least. Is that the standard position in police stations?
Yes.
And is there any audio recording as well, or is that not done?
Certainly not, not from my experience and not my knowledge either. The custody stations that I've ever worked at have never had an audio.
I think Mr Condon's rising possibly to say what Mr Coffey-
This, Chief Commissioner, section seven of the Surveillance Devices Act would prohibit the audio recording.
I just asked that question, but I'm conscious Mr Coffey indicated there were issues under the Surveillance Devices Act. There may be other complications too, bearing in mind there's a, in some areas, a passing procession of people coming and going, some of whom may not be appropriate for audio recording as well as visual recording. But the short answer is what you've said. All right. Well, we will take a break. It will resume at ten, twelve. If you could step down for the moment, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Your Honour.
Silence, all stand.
Yes, yes, Mr Fernandez.
How many times a year, Sergeant, is the advanced custody course conducted?
How many times a year?
How many times a year?
It's really depending on the needs of the organisation. We look at running, facilitating roughly around eight courses in Galben and eight courses in Sydney Olympic Park, and whatever needs arises around the state.
So, each year there are sixteen three-day courses on advanced custody for custody managers?
Yes.
Roughly, is there an average number of attendees?
Perhaps between twenty and thirty?
That completes my questions.
Yes, does anyone wish to ask any questions?
My, Chief Commissioner?
Yes.
Sergeant, my name's Trent Shari, and I'm counsel for the young person who unfortunately is the progenitor of this inquiry or investigation. You're no doubt familiar with Part Nine of LEPRA, and that it provides in effect a limit for further detention that is effectively a time that is reasonable, having regard to all the circumstances?
That's correct.
Is there some, is there some officer or role that's designated to keep an eye on that question?
Custody managers.
So, the custody managers are required to keep an eye on that? And are they given training about that issue?
They are in our course, our advanced custody course. Sorry? In our advanced custody course, sorry.
And so, if a custody manager comes to the view that, well, the reasonable time has expired, what happens then?
So, really, they have two options. They have to look at charging the person or releasing the person.
It's not the custody manager that charges though, it's the officer in charge or some other police officer.
That's correct.
So, what's the custody manager trained to do? They go, well, this guy's here, this guy's been here long enough.
What we ask of the custody manager is to have a look at all the circumstances and have a look at the times. They're the ones that are usually putting the timeouts on, putting those actions on the custody management system. They will have a conversation with the officer in charge. And what we tell them is that they have to closely monitor that clock and have conversations prior to the expiration of the time to see where that investigation's going, and, you know, what are the opportunities that exist in relation to that.
Now, the purpose of Part Nine is to allow for investigation to occur whilst, to allow for the continued detention whilst the investigation's occurring. Is there any requirement that the officer in charge or the person who's in effect going to charge or dealing with the detainee and the custody manager communicate about what investigative procedures are going to occur?
Just in relation to an interview or something like that?
Yeah, well, I mean, the obvious example is an interview, yeah, so.
Look, in my experience as well, in most cases, the custody manager will want to know what, how they're going to proceed. Are they going to interview the person? Because of that effective management of that person in custody, and obviously what processes out of that information that the custody manager will be required to complete.
Is there any training or any rule in place that says that the people who are, the officer who's investigating has to tell the custody manager whether they want to do an interview or whether they want to engage in any other investigative procedure?
Not particularly, not concise rules around that. It might be just a general conversation that they might have.
In your experience, does that conversation happen in every case or most cases?
Probably in most cases.
Can I just change in thobby a little bit? The LEPRA regulations have the custody management guidelines in them. One of those guidelines is that Aboriginal children effectively are not to be put in police cells unless there are, quote, "exceptional circumstances" that make it necessary for the wellbeing of the child. That's Schedule Two, Clause fifteen. Are there any facilities in police stations in lieu of cells where children, Aboriginal children are kept?
A dock could be one of those places. Perhaps even an interview room in some locations. It really depends on the layout of the police station. And again, in training, we can't be- And again, in training, we can't be specific because every location's very different. So it's put before the custody manager about what options do they have in placing the particular person in custody.
The dock is basically a small cell in the custody management.
If you'd say that, yes, yes.
And so is it the case that, in fact, Aboriginal children are regularly kept in the dock?
Well, I guess that's a case-by-case basis. Most people are brought into the police station, our policy says should be placed in a dock for the first two hours at least to have that continual observation. Again, what we say to custody managers is that their decisions and their justification for their decision should be based on their own opinions and what's going on around them in a case-by-case basis.
I think sometimes they leave the dock door open.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Okay. Now, where there's an allegation made by someone who's in detention, who's been arrested and is now in detention, and say they've made an allegation against an arresting police officer or something like that, and the custody manager becomes aware of that, are they given any training on how to deal with that scenario?
No.
Okay. Is there any sort of understanding or expectation of how they might deal with that scenario?
Again, within our policy, if a situation arises, possibly taking some details about that. And again, just having a look at that and the information and where does that need to go? Is it in writing? Does it then need to go up through the inspector and so forth?
But other than sort of the normal policies about that, there's nothing specific for custody managers?
Not for our course, no.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. Yes, yes, Mr White.
Yes, thank you. Just so you're aware, I'm representing one of the investigating police officers in this Just wanted to ask you about your evidence concerning contacting a support person. And as I understood your evidence, you said that it's the responsibility of the officer in charge, not the custody manager. Is that, is that what you said?
That's what I said, but it could be in consultation with the custody manager.
I just wanted to refer you to clause 29 of LEPRA regulation. What it says is that the custody manager for a detained person or protected suspect who is a vulnerable person must, so it's mandatory, as far as practicable, assist the person in exercising the person's rights under part nine of the Act, including any right to make a telephone call to a legal practitioner, support person or other person.
Yes.
To suggest to you specifically what that regulation seems to be saying is that the obligation is on the custody manager, not the officer in charge. Do you agree with that or not?
I agree with that.
So you qualify the evidence you gave before to that extent, is that the case?
I guess what I'm saying is that in relation to that legislation or that policy, that the consultation is still with the custody manager to ensure that that process is complete. Who makes that phone call? Could be either.
Well, there's a clear obligation on the custody manager according to the regulation, you'd agree.
To ensure that that process is complete.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief Commissioner. Yes.
All right. If you've got anything...
I have no further questions, Chief Commissioner.
Right. Well, that completes the evidence of Sergeant Edgell.
It does.
Thank you for your evidence, Sergeant.
Thank you, Your Honour. Thank you.
Chief Commissioner, I tender one additional document which I've been requested to tender and happy to do so. I tender the February 2023 report of the Law Enforcement Conduct Commission in relation to the use of force and a review of New South Wales Police Force Use of Force reporting. The barcodes are 8620469 through to 8620503.
Yes. Although it may not be strictly necessary to mark an earlier report of this commission as an exhibit in a particular investigation, it is helpful, I think, to gather together the items which are being referred to. And so it is appropriate to mark this report as an exhibit. So the report of the Law Enforcement Conduct Commission issued in February 2023 entitled "Review of New South Wales Police Force Use of Force Reporting" will be marked Exhibit MTS 99.
Chief Commissioner, that completes the evidence at this stage of the investigation.
Yes. The way forward, as the investigation, of course, continues, is to note that this concludes this phase of public hearings and there is likely to be a further hearing as to which there will be consultation and notification as to the time.
Yes, that's correct.
The question of whether witnesses who have been summoned so far and not released from their summons, whether those witnesses can be excused at this point, what do you submit as appropriate, Mr Fernandez?
As you indicated at the outset, Chief Commissioner, there's no difficulty with that. Those witnesses would all be aware that if there was some further need for them to give evidence, that they would be required in a further summons issue.
Does anyone wish to make any submission in respect to that course?
Just in relation to the timing of that, Chief Commissioner, just from my client's perspective, I'm appearing for two persons. The sooner they're aware of whether they're required, I think the better from their point of view.
But you're asking me, in fact, to release your clients and indeed all other summons persons from the existing summons?
Yes.
Yes, but if there was to be anything further and another summons, the sooner that's known the better. That's really what you're raising. And I understand that a number of people have been in a state of suspension for a period. All right. Does anyone else wish to say anything on this topic?
Chief Commissioner, just in relation to MTS two, which is a witness that you released and for health reasons, I don't know whether there's any prospect of that witness returning or whether or not, because I don't know the reasons, it's not appropriate that I know. But I just wondered whether, if there was some prospect of his return, then it may be appropriate to continue that subpoena insofar as it's still in full.
About that, Mr Fernandez?
Chief Commissioner, he should be released from his summons, like the other witnesses. He wasn't able to appear for reasons that are known to the commission. If there's some future need for him to be required to give evidence, a further summons can be issued.
I think you appear for MTS two, Mr Jones.
I do, Chief Commissioner. I agree with counsel assisting's proposal.
I have given some thought to this issue. The evidence of that witness, of course, given in February was certainly covered principal areas. He was, of course, not recalled in the March private examinations for health reasons. He remains in a situation where if he was required, he could be summoned again. The expectation would be that that summons could be served and called on in the usual way so that there is no detriment to the investigation if MTS two is released from his present summons. In my view, the appropriate course to take at this stage is to release him from that summons, but noting his position is a little different to the other witnesses who did give evidence at the March sittings. But I am satisfied that the appropriate course is to release him together with all other witnesses who have been summoned. With that being done, however, on the clear understanding that if the witness is required again, a summons will issue and the witness will attend, subject to any further application. I indicate generally that all witnesses who have been summoned so far and who remain subject to a summons are now excused from further attendance, but on the express understanding that if required again, there will be a further summons and attendance required. I understand what you've raised with respect to MTS two. And if any issue arises, Mr Kirk O'Cheery, and we can deal with it in the way that I've outlined.
Thanks, Chief Commissioner.
There are, of course, a number of aspects which remain under investigation. If this was the end of a civil or indeed a criminal hearing, the evidence would be complete and the only question would be a timetable for submissions, but it's not that type of proceeding. So I think the appropriate course is to note the ongoing investigation and the expectation that there will be a further date. We will seek to identify that date as soon as reasonably practicable. There are, of course, a number of matters which were raised during the evidence, including the matter which Mr Coffey indicated would be considered by the upper echelons of the New South Wales Police Force in the near future, as to which the commission will be seeking an indication of the outcome of that. And there are other areas as well which the commission is considering. So I think the general indication then is to say that the present private hearing is completed for this week. Parties will be consulted and informed with respect to a future date and the subsequent fixing of a timetable for written submissions. But perhaps before finally adjourning, is there anything that anyone wants to say?
Could I just raise one matter, Chief Commissioner? I have spoken to counsel assisting about this, but I just want to put it on the record that it's my submission that it is important, in the interests of my client, MTS 10, that the record of conversation between and the LEC officers of the 7th of March 2023 be tended as an exhibit before the inquiry.
But STM four, I think, go, Chief Commissioner.
Is that interview, has that been tended as yet?
It hasn't as yet. It will be tended as a confidential exhibit. I was proposing to do it on the next day and I did assure my friend that I would do that, but if we've got the barcode, we might do it now.
Could I just ask, is there any issue about the name?
Yes, there is.
Has he been given a pseudonym just yet?
Yes, he has.
All right. Could you just remind me of what is...
I think it's STM four, Chief Commissioner.
It's the civilian pseudonym.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. Well, I think for more abundant caution, given that his name's been used and I'm not being critical of his name being used, I should make a non-publication order with respect to his name so that the transcript of today will be edited, that they have his name taken out. His name tends to identify a number of things. So I give a direction that the name not be published and the transcript of today will have that name excised, but in its place will be the pseudonym. And I'll just remind myself of what you said in your opening at the beginning of this week in that respect. But it is MTS four U.
STM four.
STM, that's the distinction, yes. The risk of confusing everyone, including myself, it's STM four.
Yes, it is, Chief Commissioner.
So in the transcript, the name should be blocked out, but STM four should be included so that we know who we're talking about.
Chief Commissioner, I tender a transcript of the record of conversation dated the 7th of March 2023 between STM four and investigators from the Law Enforcement Conduct Commission. It's a TAB 115 of the brief. The barcode numbers are 8534701 to 8534713.
The record of conversation between commission investigators and STM four dated 7 March 2023 will be marked Exhibit MTS 100.
That should be a confidential exhibit, I should, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll make it Exhibit MTS 100C.
Thank you.
It's a confidential exhibit in the previous...
Yes, it is.
...hearing, but at this stage, it's the sole confidential exhibit since we embarked upon the public hearing.
That's right, Chief Commissioner.
So it's Exhibit MTS 100C and it is a confidential exhibit, but it is in evidence for the purpose identified by Mr White.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, I wish everyone a happy Easter and the commission will adjourn. If there's nothing else, I wish everyone a happy Easter and the commission will adjourn.